It is six oh one, and now I call this regular school board meeting to order. Dr. Salazar, we have kids here for the pledge. We have a lot of people here. Thank you for coming out, but I'll turn it over to you to introduce, who's going to introduce us to the pledge.
Thank you. This is Garcia, members of the board. This evening, we have the proud principal of La Ziesca Elementary, Ms. Lynn Martinez, and also our principal from Resaca Middle School, Ms. Elisa Pineta, here to introduce us to students who will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Thank you for having me here this evening. It's with pleasure to introduce you to two Longhorns, Alessandra Atmirano and Mauricio Aragus. Alessandra Atmirano is a student in Ms. Felix's second grade class and daughter of Jose and Belza Atmirano. She is an A Honorable Student who always puts her best efforts towards learning. She is an enthusiastic student who participates in extracurricular activities such as the LYE Poclorico Team. She is also kind, hardworking, and enjoys helping others. Mauricio Aragus is a student in Ms. Hernandez's fifth grade class and son of Amelia Garcia Aragus. This Longhorn scholar is an AB Honorable Student who loves science. He exhibits initiative and a growth mindset by excelling in academics and taking an active role in extracurricular activities such as the nature club, media club, chess club, and is currently one of our spelling bee participants. Please welcome Alessandra and Mauricio.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Elisa Pineta, and I'm the blessed principal of Resaca Middle School. I am honored to present two of our outstanding Gators this evening. Kylie Bush is an excellent role model on our campus. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face. Her parents are Jonathan and Emily Bush. Kylie's favorite subject is social studies, where she works to achieve high levels of success. Kylie does not only excel in the classroom, but she is also a talented student athlete, and is also involved outside of school in surfy as well as playing different instruments. She is currently a member of Resaca's volleyball and tennis team. Kylie's college aspiration is to attend Texas A&amp;M, where she will study to become a marine biologist. Kylie is a wonderful young lady who will continue to excel academically and socially. Tyson is a remarkable learner because he is self-motivated and always challenges himself to be his very best. His parents are Ricardo and Sabrina Rios. Tyson's favorite subject is also social studies, where he makes sure that his daily work is accurate and of the utmost quality. Tyson is a student athlete and uses his athletic skills on the football team, and plans to join the basketball and track teams. He has learned to manage his time well and always gives 100% to both his studies and his team. Tyson also uses his talents to play in an outside football and track league. His college aspiration is to attend UT of Austin to study to be a sports therapist. Tyson would like to acknowledge his parents as being his role model and his inspiration to always do his best. Tyson is an amazing student, and we know that when the time comes, he will have the skills he needs to continue to succeed. Kylie and Tyson set positive examples for their peers. Both students are phenomenal, and we are so proud of them. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Kylie and Tyson.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence? You may be seated. We want to acknowledge the parents of the wonderful students that were helping us with the pledge tonight. Thank you for being here, and thank you for raising such wonderful people. Ms. Quintero, could you please take role?
Sandra Garcia. Robert Tremino, not present. Martín Castillo, not present. Letizia Quintero, present. Ray Farias. Jesús Amaya.
Present.
Leonel Garza.
Present.
Doctor Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
There's Elizabeth Nini.
Thank you. Items number five and six are public audience and public comment, and we did not have anybody sign up for either of those. So we move on to item number seven, district recognition. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Salazar.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board and members of the audience, this evening, we set out to recognize staff members who are modeling lifelong learning and achieving a higher level of proficiency in this challenging field of public education. We have a number of recognitions, but to help lead us, and with the first recognition is our parental involvement, parental engagement coordinator, Ms. Claudia Medina. Ms. Medina.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, members of the board, district leaders, and community. My name is Ms. Claudia Medina Garcia, and I am the family engagement coordinator, and it brings me great joy to introduce and congratulate Ms. Celia Hernández. Ms. Celia Hernández is a parent outreach labor for our department. Ms. Hernández is a very caring, compassionate individual and professional, and we appreciate the world of initiative and passion that she brings to her work every day in strengthening and building those relationships to continue enhancing our homeschool connections, which is our big goal, to support our district. And tonight, we congratulate her as she has completed a Masters of Education in Counseling, and we join in celebrating. Congratulations, Ms. Hernández.
Reyes Carreño at the lectern.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. It is my privilege today to present to you Ms. Cynthia Aguilar. She is a prekinder teacher at Laureles Elementary. Ms. Aguilar has served us for the last two school years. Her ability to build relationships with our students, not only with our students, but with the families that she serves, is truly a testament to her commitment to education, not to mention the way that she has embraced a literature role in our campus, mentoring our young new teachers, seeing kids come into her classrooms, genuinely happy and smiling to come into school for the first time. It's truly remarkable. And so I want to congratulate Ms. Garcia, and it is an honor to be a part of her continued professional growth. So, thank you, Ms. Cynthia.
Ms. Veronica Grimaldo, principal at LFE, will now introduce us to another staff member.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, and our community. Today, it is with great pride and pleasure to introduce Ms. Ivalia Kresdorn. She is a, our LDL, our Language Development Lab teacher at Los Fresnos Elementary. This is her second year here at LFE, but we believe maybe about seven or eight years with LFC ISD. She has a passion for bilingual learners, and today she receives her recognition for a Masters in Bilingual Education with a specialization in dual language, in dual language. Again, this is evidence and a testament to what she does as for our babies and for her passion of helping our bilingual students. So, tonight, thank you, Ms. Kresdorn, for all you do for our babies, and this is for you.
Next, I believe Dr. Roach will introduce one of the staff members.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. It's with great pleasure that I introduce to you an amazing teacher, Mrs. Nancy Diaz. Ms. Diaz has been an Algebra I teacher for 10 years at Los Fresnos United, and we're so blessed to have her. She recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M University with a Masters degree in counseling, completing her internship during the pandemic. We told her it's not going to be this bad, trust me, in the future. So, we're very pleased to have her with us. She's not ready to move in to leave the classroom yet, and so we respect that greatly because we need her in the classroom. But it's with great pleasure that I introduce to you Ms. Nancy Diaz, and here is your award. Thank you.
We welcome Mrs. Pineta back to the lectern.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Fabiola Amaya. She has three years of teaching experience at Resaca Middle School as an ALU teacher. On behalf of Resaca Middle School, we want to congratulate Mrs. Amaya for receiving her Masters degree from UTRGV in the area of Special Education. Thank you, Mrs. Amaya, for everything you do, and congratulations.
We have one more recognition, but I want to tell you that a little over 33% of our teachers now have advanced degrees joining this group. Also, there was a group of teachers that could not be with us this evening. I'm going to read their names out. Guadalupe Navarro Torres, Monica Melendez, Olivia Gano, Evelyn Gonzalez Flandes, Cheryl Quintero, Janet Chisneros, Cynthia Cano, Brenda Rebajoso, Elsa Vega Gutiérrez. Could not attend tonight's meeting, but we're very proud of all of the teachers who are seeking and pursuing advanced degrees, all to the benefit of our students. Dr. Roach, we now welcome you back for one more.
One more. Thank you, sir. And this is a much bigger pledge than the other ones because Mr. Brent Burkott, if you could come, I should say, Dr. Brent Burkott, has recently graduated from the University of Texas RGV with a doctorate in curriculum and instruction with a specialization in science. And the first thing I asked him is, what do you plan to do with that degree? And he said, I don't know. So, he finished his doctorate, and you know how hard it is, Dr. Salazar, for the joy of learning, for the love of learning, just to better himself. And so that is admirable in my part. He is an amazing teacher. He's been a biology teacher in Los Fresnos for 16 years, if that's right. And he's another one. We don't want to leave the classroom because we respect what he does in the classroom, and he does an amazing job for our regular biology and our honors biology students. So, Dr. Burkott, congratulations. You're a good man. Thank you, sir.
To everyone that was recognized tonight, thank you for all you do for the kids, and thank you for being such a good example of being a lifelong learner. We're lucky to have you. And thank you to the families who I know have to sacrifice a lot when they have a family member studying at night on top of a full-time job. So, thank you.
Next, we welcome the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School here to introduce us to a group of students that are also achieving at high levels. So, I won't say anymore, except help me welcome Mr. Stumball.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. The College Board National Recognition Programs grant high school students academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications. Students are awarded recognition in either their junior or senior year. If a student is recognized in the fall of their junior year, they will remain a member of the National Recognition Program through their senior year. Colleges and scholarship programs across the country use these honors to identify students who have excelled on their PSAT or AP exams and in their classrooms. The eligibility criteria used to determine national recognition recipients includes taking the PSAT, their sophomore or junior year, and scoring in the top 10% of the state, or by earning a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams by the start of 11th grade. Students must also have a 3.5 GPA or higher, and identify as African-American, Hispanic-American, or attend a school in a rural or small town. Students are considered for the Rural and Small Town Recognition Program based on the location of their high school. Areas are considered rural and small town based on location data from the National Center for Education Statistics. This year, Los Fresnos High School is proud to announce that we have 79 students who have met this prestigious level of recognition. And we are going to introduce them one at a time. Rihanna Apasible. Bernardo Avendano. Angela Aviles. Caitlin Barera. Josiel Briones. Erin Cantú. Emma Caraveo. Joseph Castro. Josué Serrón. Angelique DeWelly. Abril Esquivel. Parents, you'll be able to take some pictures. We'll do our best to slow down out front as well. Gabriana Garido. Alisa Garcia. Robert Garcia. Nicholas Gutteridge. Diego Guzmán. Carla Jimenez. Jennifer Laznovsky. Jared Keller. Leah Littlefield. Kyle Laundrie. Ethan Maciel. Taola Marquez. Razell Marquez. Abigail Martinez. Emmy Martinez. Javier Mata. Jose Mendiola. Braden Mikulik. Erin Molina. Blanca Ochoa. Keen Ogao. Matthew Ovayé. Abigail Peña. Karen Pedales. Jasmine Ponce. Damian Quezada. Fernando Ramírez. Sylvia Rodriguez. Joseph Trevino. Oneda V. Molina. Viviana Suniga.
So, the students we recognize here usually make up the Mount Rushmore banner on Highway 100. Many of them, we're going to have to put them on our website and on social media. We took a panoramic picture earlier today.
Thank you to the parents for coming. Okay, we move on to item number eight, district presentation. Item number one, Tazby Experience with Mr. Amaya. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I don't know if this is on. Yeah, I guess it is. Very quickly, I have to thank you and the remainder of the board and Dr. Salazar for allowing me to serve on this board. I had interviewed probably three or four years ago, I don't remember, Dr. Salazar, and had not been selected. But through the encouragement of many of the people here, when it came open again, in February, we went through the whole process of interviewing again, and I was selected. So, in March of this year, I got to go to my first meeting very quickly, and then we went to a summer meeting, and we just, I didn't know what Tazby was all about. We were members, we'd been members for 16 years. I did, I had no idea the size and the things that it involves with their membership, and really what they stand for in Texas as far as advocacy for our kids. And I think that Dr. Salazar might add something in just a minute. As he sat through a presentation, I believe, early in the week, a couple of weeks ago, and I think that you probably saw some things too that you weren't aware of. Maybe you were aware of them. I shouldn't say that. But anyway, that was just for a, to fill out what was the remaining of a one-year term. So, it came up again. I had to reapply, and y'all endorsed me, as well as nine other schools from Region One. But you have to have 50% of the schools, not 50% of those that endorse, because many of them don't endorse. I got nine, and then we had a challenger from PSJ, and six, PSJ, they got six, and one from Donna, they got four. So, nobody had the 50%. So, we had to go through the interviewer process again for a three-year term. Went through the interview process, I was selected again, but they still had a chance to challenge me from the floor, challenge a board member from the floor. They had a timeline on that, and I didn't know till we got up there that no one had challenged me. So, basically, Tazby operates by committee, and so their board members, although they may be similar in format, things move very quickly because it's a presentation of the committee and what their decision is. And since there was a recommendation from committee, there's no seconds unless they want to pull something. It's mostly consent agenda. So, it was, the whole, the whole experience has been very beneficial to me, not just in my profession, but in growing as a board member. I, I, I think that, uh, and, and I said, I've said this before, uh, we, in 2010, we were honored as, as, as the honor board for Texas. And, uh, I don't care if he gets embarrassed, we, our, our greatest skill at that point was staying out of the way of a great leader and a great team. And I, I don't think that we maybe had improved our knowledge and, and, and information about being a good board member, because we were a good board man, uh, we were a good boarder. In fact, they honored us as the Texas Honor Board, but because of you and because of the team that you have, uh, not acquired, but developed and, and nurtured and, uh, are all here, I think that when people look throughout the state at anything that has to do with Los Fedenos, they say, "That's a great district." I went to, up to the, um, introduced myself to the current president of the Texas Association of, of School Administrators, who is the superintendent at, no, not the superintendent, at Sunny Bay. When I mentioned where I was, he says, "You know you have the best in the business." I said, "We do know that." Uh, God, and we're, and we're very happy that he doesn't realize that, uh, but we do know that, and it's just been a great experience for me, so I want to thank you and the support we have. I think that what, once we look, once we look at, at, uh, TASBee and start understanding TASBee, I think that things like that, what Letty and I got to do at the, the, I had never been to a delegate assembly, but TASBee feels that the delegate assembly is the biggest thing that they do, and it is, uh, I don't know about you, Letty, but I was, we're used to this down here, and, you know, people get along and people respect. And now we're talking about the whole state of Texas with, I don't know how many delegates there were in that place, and we're, when we're voting on our priorities and we're, we're voting on our statements of belief, one little word that's in there took forever, uh, one little phrase of, uh, eradicating systemic racism, which was one of our state, in our statement of beliefs, took maybe an hour, forty-five minutes on the discussion, finding somebody just called for the question, and because they wanted to remove that from our statement of belief, that TASBee would, uh, believed that, that systemic, uh, racism should be eradicated. It was an education for me that day, so I, I'm glad that I got to experience, and I'm glad that Los Fedenos got to experience. We, we're lucky to have two people there. But we have to do something as far as our region. Everybody knows that our region, as far as student performance, outshines everybody. Or maybe everybody doesn't know it, but if they looked at the numbers, they would. I don't think that our legislators realize, the ones that are fighting our battles right now in most of Region One are the superintendents, and they do a great job. But, you know, our representatives and our senators might listen to the superintendent, I'm sure that they do, uh, but I can't imagine what would, what they would do when they had a, a room full of elected officials that, at least in their minds, think that they have pull within their communities. I think that it would do a lot for Region One to show that kind of support. We were disappointed, and I, I know Letty was there. They put you in regions, maybe for the delegate, delegate assembly for a caucus, and they gave us a room about, well, maybe from here to there for Region One. Twenty, there's twenty regions. Some of the regions were getting big, but they know that the participation from Region One is going to be minimal. I think that we had seven schools represented there out of how many school districts, and thirty-four school districts. So one of the things that we talked about is, hey, let's, when we get to the grassroots meeting in February, let's see if we can have more representation there. People need to know about us, they need to listen to us, uh, not just our legislators, but I, I think if the rest of the state knew what we knew about this region, uh, I don't know whether they'd be impressed or not, but I think that they would be coming to us a little bit more and saying, "How y'all doing that?" Because your, your socioeconomic level is so high, but your student performance is, is as well, and most people give up on that, uh, when they, when they see the socioeconomic level, they say, "Boy, this is really, really going to hard." And, and I'm not saying it's not hard, you, the work that y'all do is just amazing. So again, thank you for, for allowing me, uh, and, and the board for your support. I did get reelected for another three-year term. Now, I'm just, I think I only have two terms left, uh, or two years left here, so that would mean another reelection if I was in, to continue on there, but thank you very, very much.
What it means is you got to run again, that's all it means. Ms. Keet, do you want to share about your experience? Volunteered to go to the delegate assembly.
I actually was volunteered, but I'm glad, I'm glad. When I walked in, I said, "Am I in Washington DC or what?" I was blown away, but thank you for, for the experience, and I'm, I'm proud to serve.
And I wanted to thank you both for representing. We, we've always known the caliber of, of trustee, because you carry yourselves as trustees, and I was very, very proud to see you both attend and represent. TASBee does have, uh, they're, they, they do have a lot of entities within TASBee that do work for our school districts, uh, and I was able to experience, uh, the Legislative Aid Fund. Uh, as President-elect, I serve on that, on that board, we'll, we'll serve for two years, and it's very, very interesting. So yes, I agree that Region One School Board Association needs to inspire others, uh, to, to get involved, so thank you. We, we too were absent from the delegate assembly for so many years, so I, I hope more of you will also, uh, participate in the future.
One last thing, ma'am, I, and I know that you're, it's probably been on your mind, you, I don't know if it wakes you up at night, but, uh, we got to see some great student, um, artists. And ours are preparing for that right now. I got to remind, next year in San Antonio, it's going to be our kids that are up there on that stage, and they're, I'm sure they'll rise to the occasion, but those performances were beautiful and inspiring. So it's, it's going to be exciting to see ours up there, uh, representing us and representing this region.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Ma? How many delegates, how, how many delegates could we send? I mean, is there a limit? Is it one per district?
Yes, each district can, can only have one. Since I'm on the board, we had, we had two, uh, uh, because I, I get a, or the board members, not I, the board members get a vote too. But I think our membership is somewhere at seven hundred and fifty, uh, did, did you say it was in the seven hundreds or eight hundreds as far as the membership of TASBee? Yeah, but we had, we had, uh, just seven or eight, uh, and, and I, it, it's sad, because they know that Region One's not going to represent, and they give us this little, they're ready, this little room with a few chairs there, uh, when these other regions have this large, and they're listening to them. Uh, I, it's, their big thing, one of their big things is advocacy. Uh, and it's a two-year cycle. We're going to start with a grassroots meeting next February. Uh, the, the other thing is, I didn't realize how, how TASBee or the Texas Association of School Boards was so respected and so farther, further ahead than most state school board associations. We've had several Texas, uh, people that were presidents of the Texas Association of School Boards become presidents of the National Association of School Boards, just like we do right now. Uh, and this, this young lady, uh, represents us well, but she, she's now the president of the National Association of School Boards. I didn't realize that by-board and things like that, which started in, in Texas, now are, 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 uh, throughout other states. Uh, they're, they, they give, they, and I don't, I'm not sure the term, we can get some financial help here. They incur, they not incur, the revenue that they make from, from the things that they do is just amazing, and they're be, they're able to do other things and hire the best people. What, to me, is amazing, and I said this to a group when I had to speak, is that all these services that TASBee does, what is even more incredible, and I wish you could put it in a bottle, is the culture of TASBee as far as everyone. You walk in the door and people start helping you. You, everybody, doesn't matter that he's an officer, doesn't matter that, that, the, the culture of help is unbelievable. But I'm sure it's comparable to ours, but it is very, very impressive, that no matter who you are, you know, the, and no matter who they are, they're, 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 they're a help.
Well, thank you for willing, being willing to serve. I know it takes a lot of time. Really appreciate it. I'll turn it over to you for the.
For the next two.
Hallsworth Leadership.
Yes, so, um, during, uh, so during the convention, we, we kind of stuck together mostly so I could steer board members away from superintendent search sessions. Um, and as we found, as we learned the great things that are happening in other school districts, I would get board members, look at me, and I said, "We do that too, we do that too." So, um, tonight, we want to touch on two topics. We're, we're going to start with the Hallsworth Center Leadership Collaborative. Uh, we are one of, uh, fourteen districts that are participating in, in this cohort, and Ms. Ara, Ara Amaro Cibaja, Executive Director for Support Services, has a, a short presentation, um, that we bring for this initial update of the Hallsworth Center Leadership Collaborative. Mrs. Amaro.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salasad. And continuing with a topic of collaboration and, and learning as a group among, among the state of Texas. Dr. Salasad, um, this is Jennifer Stumbine, I have participated, or are participating, in the Hallsworth Leadership Collaborative Group. As, as Dr. Salasad said, there's fourteen districts, and this is the eighteenth month experience that we're going to be going through as, as leaders and bringing some of that information back into our district, as they build, as we in turn continue to build leaders here at our, at our district. Um, the Hallsworth Center is founded by Charles Butt, the CEO, uh, and Chairman of HEB, and he founded this organization, the Hallsworth Center, for his mother, who was a teacher. And his belief is that if we wouldn't have long-term, sustainable improvement in public education, we must start at the root of our school districts to develop leaders and to in turn, who would help our, our campuses, our students, and ultimately student success. The mission of the Hallsworth Center is to impact, over time, the quality of K to twelve public education for all Texas students by supporting and developing education leaders. Um, this time in this collaborative, there are fourteen districts, and mostly they're from East Texas. Each district was allowed to take only three representatives. Uh, in the Rio Grande Valley, it's only Mission and Los Fedenos CISD who are participating.
We applied for, uh, an initial cohort, uh, that is more extensive, where they also include principals, and, uh, we did not get selected for it. They only selected six out of the entire state, but they called back later and said, "We're creating a whole other program, and we would like to invite you to participate." So the initial application was sufficient, as we had already, um, discussed, our strengths and weaknesses and goals and aspirations.
As we're going through the sessions, uh, it was, it was shown to us and, and reviewed, that research states that the second most important person, besides that teacher in the classroom, is the principal, the leader of that institution, that's also leading those teachers to provide, to provide services. We had to go back and look at past two years, and we know that with the pandemic, there was crisis, and there has to be change. As a leader, there was a lot of ambiguity. I know that our famous was, we pivot and adjust, right, as we come in. So there's a lot of ambiguity, and that's where we have to support and establish and grow our leaders for those crises that come into, to our schools or to organizations. We know that when there's normal routines, there's management, there's a, a lot of predictability, so we know what's happened, we know how to deal. However, we need to grow our leaders into that crisis, into that certain change that comes in. There's a model that they follow, it's a seventy, twenty, ten, pretty much is saying that ten percent of what we learn as leaders, we learn it in school. Twenty percent, we learn from our mentors, but the seventy percent that we learn comes from hands-on experiences, daily routines and daily challenges. So seventy percent is for opportunities that either the district provides to us, or that we provide in turn to our support, to our staff. So this is what we follow, the seventy, twenty, and, and ten. It did, it did bring some, some clarity into us as, as leaders, as we came back to share that we have to offer those opportunities to our teachers, to our leaders, instead of, sometimes we step in and we want to take over the task or do it, but we have to provide those experiences for them. Our study, and what we've been doing, is based on this book, The Leadership Pipeline, and how are we going to illustrate, it's going to be illustrated by these two pictures here, pretty much the same. Um, this is what our first session, uh, consisted of, and as we're looking at a pipeline, and we're developing leaders from a pipeline, so we know, if we look at the pipeline metaphor on the right side, uh, we know that every turn, from a teacher to a teacher leader, or from a teacher leader to the AP, there's major changes in our law, in our jobs, um, major changes in our requirements for that job. We know we require new skills, time, um, maybe some even some, sometimes applications, work values. So in every turn, we must ensure that our school district is also supporting to, to take that passage on to the next level. On the other picture, we can see that the gray areas, those are our passages, those are the turns that are depicted on this side. And in those passages, if we're not allowing support to those, to our leaders to go on to the next level, then we're clogging the system. If we're doing the work for them, or if we're not leading them, then we're clogging the system and then not allowing them to grow. So these passages, what they're asking for us to do and to review and examine is to ensure that we're offering support to each one of these levels to go on to the next level.
Uh, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, so what they're encouraging us to do also is to look at your organization. How are you developing the leadership pipeline in your school? Because the leadership, ship pipeline is more, more of steps, like you see there, it is not linear, um, and it is in those turns where we as an organization have an obligation to identify potential leaders and begin to give them the skill set in that blue turn, during that blue turn, begin to give them the skill set that they need to be successful at the next level. So when they arrive at the next level, um, they can, if, if you're an assistant, you're an assistant that's not learning on the job, you already came, we, we created, we fabricated the seventy percent experiences. In other words, we identified you, we pulled you out from your current role, and allowed you to have experiences that prepared you to be a better assistant, better equipped as an assistant. Uh, and, and so a different way to represent that is the, the gray triangles in, where those lines intersect, that is the window, that is the area, the opportunity that we have as an organization to, to prepare, uh, administrators for the, for the next level.
The Hallsworth, uh, Center also builds the, the framework of the Hallsworth House, and pretty much what this is, is building for our future. What are we doing in building this framework, or building our schools for the future, that at the end is the excellence and equitable outcomes for students? That's what our goal is. But in order to do that, first, we must establish our foundation, and we started looking at our district culture and to establish that foundation and for a leadership definition. It's going to be a process, uh, they talked about what leadership meant, what does it mean to our district? Starting, that was part of our homework as we go out, what does leadership look at your district? We're going to go back next week, and we're going to start building that leadership definition for our district. So that's the, the foundation, we have the enablers, and what's important here too is at the top where we have the pipeline of ready, and I'm going to do the pillars, explain the pillars in just a bit. But at the top, the pipeline of ready leaders, pretty much what we just discussed before, and knowing who is ready to take on the next level. Who's ready and they, they depicted as who's at the bench, ready to move up and take on this leadership role. Also, we have the staff engagement, and for here, they talked about the amount of discretionary effort that our teachers, that our staff is putting forward into, uh, our district and being engaged, and all, all discretionary, it's because you want to do it. It's because you, you believe in that culture and that leadership definition, and you want to be part of this, of this home. Then we have the pillars, and this is what keeps our home, our house, stable, and we first have to identify. They talked about always seeing, listening, and using data to identify who are your potential leaders? Who do we see, who do, where do we hear, and what is data telling us about who's, who's next? Who do we start building? We have to develop those experiences, the seventy, uh, the seventy, twenty, ten model, develop those experience, and then start placing. Once you identify, you develop, you place those leaders in the appropriate school. Are they good for the school? Are they good for the district? And let's place them correctly. And then the support that we as, as district staff, as, um, executives, as directors, what support do we offer our principals in turn ensuring student success? And at the very end, we had time to analyze our pipeline metrics and we used data. Of course, they did tell us, "Don't go change anything." I know that the very first night, we were drafted, Dr. Salazar had a plan. This is what we're gonna do. In the morning, they told us, "Hey, you need to stop, you need to slow down." This is only session one of eighteen months. He says, "Cancel all," they told us, "Cancel all those emails, don't make any plans. We want to study your district." We had to go and talk to also HR last day. Look at who we have at our district and what are retirees, are new hires? What does our pipeline look like? And mostly their goal there or what we had to do is to analyze that data and start to cultivate talent within our district. So this is session one of, again, of, of eighteen months. We're gonna go back next week and continue to learn, continue to bring it back and in turn train our, our leaders. That's all I have.
Give me some model, any question?
So what is the schedule? Like, how often do y'all go? I, I know it's over eighteen months, but...
So we did September, October is next week. There's no, it's about every two months, no, there's not one in November. We go again in December. It's about two to three days each session.
And they, and we built in, in Austin, on the, on the lake, at a, uh, the foot of a hill, an entire campus with classrooms, meeting rooms, um, places to, to gather, uh, hotel rooms. They had six different buildings. It's really a beautiful place, the, uh, gardens are, there's a, uh, rain gardens throughout the, throughout the campus. It's, uh, dedicated just for the development of school leaders in Texas.
Like a college, going to college for three days. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for participating.
So our commitment to keeping with the theme of continuous improvement, we now bring you information on how we're going to, uh, monitor student growth, student progress moving forward. This is Valerie Landry, Executive Director for Academics, will now present MAP Growth.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Uh, I'm excited to talk to you about MAP Growth because when we talked to you about it back in the summer, and I think, I think that was via a Zoom meeting even, we, we were excited about the possibility of what this tool would bring to our district, but we hadn't actually, like, really experienced it yet. And we have just finished our first round of assessments. And so, uh, tonight, I'm gonna come to you with a lot of excitement about what this is, one, telling us about our district, but two, uh, the tools that it's equipping our teachers with, which is really exciting. So I gave you a copy of our handbook, don't feel like you gotta read that. And I'm not going to cover all of that today, but that is our handbook, uh, our practical application of how we're going to do things here in the district with MAP. It is a work in progress, it's a working document. Uh, as we, uh, run into little hiccups along the way, bumps along the road, we will add that information to this handbook and hopefully it gets better and better uh, as we go through and have multiple, uh, assessments under our belt. So just a reminder, MAP is, uh, MAP Growth is an assessment tool. It's nationwide, actually, it's worldwide. It is the leader, it's the gold standard out there in measurement of growth. It is a computer adaptive assessment, which means as students, no two students take the same exam. So when a student sits down to take an exam, they are given an at-grade level question, maybe two or three of those questions. And depending on how well they do on that assessment, they will either get harder or more difficult questions or they will get, um, easier questions. And it keeps moving back and forth, back and forth, until it really finds the student zone of proximal development, where they should be learning at. So this truly is a diagnostic tool. It is meant to measure growth over time, which is really exciting for us because we've been talking about for a long time, growth for every student. Not just growth for our advanced students, not just growth for our, our bilingual students, growth for every student, and that's a challenge.
The assessment kids?
Yeah. So we are, we're super excited about the fact that we're going to have some data that helps to, uh, inform our practices because we all know it's not easy to be a teacher. It's not easy to have twenty to thirty different learners in your classroom and trying to figure out, "How do I meet the needs of all of those students?" So sometimes we might shoot for the middle or sometimes we might focus on the struggling learner because it's really hard to collect informative data that shapes your instruction. But now we have a tool that helps us do that. So I'm gonna show you what that looks like because it does give us truly actionable data on students. So just a reminder, we have implemented this year for Kinder through eighth grade. We implemented solidly reading and math this fall. We did science at fifth and eighth grade. We will eventually wean in science at other grade levels to fill the gap. We also, our middle school students who took algebra or Algebra II took those exams as well. High school teachers, you know, it's, it takes a little bit more to say, "Hey, you want one more assessment? You want more data on kids?" Uh, so it took us a little bit longer. We didn't wanna force it on them because we really wanted to have a solid implementation this fall. And so we did the K through eight, but we invited a couple of high school teachers over to see it because their, MAP is just now moving away from kind of what TACs used to be. It was just a math test or just a, a reading test. And then when we moved to STAR, it was more end of course, right? It was course-specific exam. MAP is currently moving to course-specific exam. So you can take Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II. You can take Biology, you can take English I, English II. And they're gonna continue to grow that. But, um, so we invited a few teachers, they came and saw it. And so we have about three hundred students at LSU that will actually be taking this as part of a pilot. So our Algebra students, uh, many of our Algebra teachers jumped on it and said, "We want this information" for our students and a couple of English classes are going to take it and pilot it for us, uh, this fall. And then we'll make a decision as we move into spring if we'll add additional high school courses. So what this is gonna help us do is to identify the unfinished learning. We're coming out of COVID and so we know there's unfinished learning. And then we know on any given year, at any given time, we do have gaps in learning for a variety of reasons. Maybe a student's coming from a different school district and maybe didn't have the same scope and sequence that we had. Uh, there's a lot of reasons for that, but this year, we're really facing both, the unfinished learning and the gaps in learning. And so what does that mean for our teachers, for our curriculum department? How do we meet these needs? And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about, this is, this is a mind shift for all of us as we begin to look at a different kind of assessment. Typically, we look at criterion reference, uh, assessment. So on a scale of zero to one hundred, if you get a seventy-five, that means you got seventy-five percent of the questions right. So we're very used to seeing, um, a cut score and everything above that is passing and everything below that is not passing. Uh, if you are to hear your child got a fifty or scored in the, on, at the fiftieth percentage, you'd know your child did not do really well on that test. But in this assessment, this is actually a norm reference assessment. So there is not a cut score, there is not a pass scale number. We're actually looking at a whole nother scale of scores. It's called a RIT score, a, a RIT scale. Not gonna get too much into it, this is gonna be a series. So we'll come back and, uh, at the middle of the year and look at growth and we'll get deeper into the data. But what we'll talk about today is percentiles and quintiles. And so we're talking about breaking students up basically on a bell curve, right? And saying that the very center of that bell curve is the fiftieth percentile, not the fiftieth percentage. So if we told a parent, "Your child's performing at the fiftieth percentile," they might drop their jaw and say, "My child's never failed before." But what we're telling you is your child is performing at average, at the mean of, if we lined up everybody, that was average. And so we're having to do a lot of, uh, communication within the district, even to help administrators and teachers and all of us understand the difference between a criterion reference and a norm reference. So when I show you the data, because we're gonna look at how we performed as a district at our beginning of year assessment and, uh, and then we'll talk about where our students fell as far as quintiles are concerned and percentiles. So this very first chart, let me kinda lay it out for you. On the left-hand side, we have the gray, the center at the bottom, the yellow area at the top. And then there's a broken line at the side, the green line at the top. So we need to, you know, to pick this assessment around the third or fourth grade school. You wanna take it younger. The red shows low, the bottom half, from zero to fifty percent. Bottoms, twenty percent of students. Um, so this, and then we have the low average, the average, the yellow, the high average, the green, the five. So keep a watch. All of our students performing in the green and the blue area, um, the yellow being average. And then, um, students who we need to work on some of that unfinished learning or those gaps we see in the red and the teal color. What we can see here is, um, about what we expected. Um, if you look at the third grade and below, so the bottom half of the chart, we see that we're slightly over what we, on it, on average, we should only see about twenty percent of students in that range. And we're slightly over, except for kindergarten, and I'll explain the little caveat with kindergarten. But first, second, and third grade, our students, we have a little bit more than twenty percent of our students who are falling in that bottom quintile when we look at a bell curve of where performance is at. And we have to remember that our third graders, the last time they had a normal school year was in kindergarten. And so with reading, this is a nationwide problem. Because what this is being compared to is twenty-twenty norms. So twenty-twenty norms were set across the nation pre-COVID. So this is compared to how students were performing before we've had these eighteen-plus months of a pandemic and we've had learning loss and gaps. Kindergarten, however, is doing extremely well and we're very excited about that. Last year, we implemented our first year of full-day pre-K for all students. And we can see here where we're just knocking it out of the ballpark with our Kinder students. Those kids, even though they also were going through a pandemic, the, they had a full day of pre-K comparative to the half-day that they had received before and the fact that our district provides pre-K services for all students, not just certain populations across the nation. A lot of times, we're gonna see only, um, particular, uh, students that qualify for those pre-K services. So we can see where that honestly is making a huge impact because they're already asking us, like, "Okay, what's the difference here? What are y'all doing?" Um, we also implemented last year a program, um, with Fidelity called Hatch and it focuses on Kinder readiness skills to ensure that all of our students are ready to learn when they come into kindergarten. And we're able to see that here. This is the math, um, assessment. And across the nation, the research is already showing that math took the hardest hit from COVID. So we're seeing it across, uh, more grade levels instead of seeing it primarily in the early childhood grade levels where reading is really being developed. Um, the really good news about this chart is the very top one where you can see the green and the blue very skewed. Those are our current eighth graders who are taking Algebra. Obviously, an advanced group of students, but nonetheless, um, we've been concerned about all of our kids through COVID that are Algebra, are advanced learners. We weren't quite sure, um, if they would be at the same level. And we don't wanna create, um, any, um, inequity in those students. Because we're accelerating them, they don't have to be accelerated. And we don't want, uh, that to become a punishment, um, for them, uh, in their ranking or in their achievement. And we're seeing that they're doing extremely well. So we're excited about that. So that, that showed you where our students fall as far as the quintiles are concerned, but you have to give more context to the data, which is really looking at what is the normed mean? So what is the average? This, these are looking at averages across the nation. We are not being compared to Texas anymore. So STAR test, yes, we know we do great, we're an A-rated district, we're doing well. But how do we compare? Uh, COVID, if nothing else, taught us that we live in a global economy and our students have to be able to compete against any student in this nation or in the world, honestly. And so this is reading, so we are in blue. Don't worry about the, the RIT score on the left-hand side. It really doesn't have a lot of context except for to know that it is an equal interval scale, which means we should expect to see from year to year those increase. It is not just that, "Oh, wow, our eighth graders are doing fabulous and our kindergartners are doing terrible." No, it is an equal interval scale, so we should be able to see that step up each year. So you can see there in almost across the board, we are above the national norm. Now, what I told you before is the national norm was set, okay, I can do that. Uh, the national norm was set pre-COVID. So when we look at this, even though we may have skewed a little bit of students in the bottom quintile, as an average, we're performing above where the nation was before COVID happened. And that's from three weeks ago. That's how our kids are performing today compared to the norms that they had set. So this, uh, this year, we're, we're just slightly below, um, second and third grade, first, second, third, and, and back a little bit where we saw it two weeks. But it doesn't look like COVID hit our students or, I, I, I mean, and it did. But I'd be, I can't wait to see, give us a couple of years to catch up and close those learning gaps and let's see how we compare to the, the national mean then. So this gave a lot of credibility to, okay, we're not just comparing ourselves in Texas because sometimes we'll hear, "Well, Texas is number forty-six in reading approximation," or whatever. And we go, "We're good, but if we're only comparing ourselves to that." This is comparing us to how we do approximation across all students who took the test in the same time period that we did. Students who took it during the third and fourth week of instruction, how did they do compared to ours? And then we can see in MAP, right there, we can see how we continue to go up about an equal interval. This is what we wanna do in terms of actually doing better in MAP, in the national average. Here, the, the column on the left is Algebra I eighth graders. We have a cohort of accelerated honors students that we started three years ago with the goal of accelerating them. They are actually taking Algebra II this year as they grow. We would've loved to continue, that was meant to continue, but COVID happened and we felt like it was not fair to our students to accelerate their learning that much when they weren't able to be in the classroom either. So this is our only cohort that we hope to pick that back up. And we see that they're doing, um, uh, quite small in terms of, 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 of. Science, we've always done very well in science, in the area of science, and we can, uh, maybe attribute that to the fact that we have got to do the science part, to get elements of it and ensure that that science learning isn't put off just because all the year you have a test. Uh, and so, uh, compared to the national average, we're doing good. That average is taking the, 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 the. So that kinda gives you a perspective of where we are as a district. So obviously, a lot of the guys are deciding that right now. How, how do you compare to that to what you're, um, doing right now? How, how do you compare that to what you're doing in class? So if you're, if you're, uh, what people in particular, class or course, you could see that my child, I didn't have a lot of, uh, you know, you're, uh, 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 you're, uh,
Any questions from the board? I'm excited about how excited you are.
The measure, you know, a measure of academic progress, and we were talking earlier how the savvy teacher can then really get to know who's sitting in a classroom given their performance on different, different subject areas, and how they can use it to group students even within activities, really helping the teacher move from the proficient teacher to the distinguished and accomplished, moving them towards being a master, a master teacher. I have to tell you, a public acknowledgement here, that at first I questioned, I was brought along to the MAPS world. I was, uh, I asked a lot of, a lot of questions, and I couldn't see. But we have a great team, and Valerie helped me see what I couldn't see about MAPS. And it does replace a number, a number of tests. No more GT testing, no more reading inventories. Any other tests? Thank you, Mrs. Landry.
If there aren't any questions from the board, we will move on to item number nine, district report. Dr. Salasad.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, just want to point out that in our financial reports, you see a little bit of a dip in our tax collection report. That's due to the fact that we are making the transition between, uh, um, uh, the firm that was collecting our taxes and now the county. So there were some delays, that we lost about a week in, in that period. We, we, we are confident that the next time we bring you this report, we will be, uh, uh, very, very, in a, in a very similar place to where we were at, uh, at present time, at that time of the year before. Uh, under, uh, report number two, um, we, we have our district improvement plan. This is a, a living, working document that even as we presented today, we've already made updates. Um, but we will continue to, uh, one of, some of the most recent updates we have there are the ESER funds, any plans, any initiatives that are being funded through our ESER are now being added to our district improvement plan. We can always point back, anytime there's a purchase or an expenditure, we can point back to our district improvement plan. Um, and then we also have our state compensatory evaluation. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Amado to give us highlights while I go in the next room and we get a report that I left back there.
So what we have, we had included in the board packet was our evaluation for our state compensatory education program. Uh, our district receives funds from the state for our, for services to supplement, uh, what our students, at-risk students are receiving, the services they're receiving, above and beyond what the general population is receiving. Uh, the program funding, uh, was noted there that for the 2020-2021 school year, we received twelve million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for our entire district, of which fifty-five percent is required to be spent on services and programs to our students. Uh, every, every, every year, we'll look and identify, and there's fourteen indicators where we have to identify our at-risk students. What we have, and it shows on the first page in the highlights, we have at-risk students, we know that we have fifty percent, fifty-point-two percent of our total enrollment are at-risk, have been identified as the student. We also see that fifty-two-point-five of them are male, females are forty-seven-point-two. Our ethnicity, our group that's highly representative or represented in at-risk are Hispanics, at fifty-point-six. I also wanted to highlight the economic disadvantage. Uh, we know that our district serves eighty percent of our students are economically disadvantaged, and of those eighty percent, fifty-four percent of that eighty percent are at-risk students. So their economic disadvantage, and at the same time, they have been identifying by one of the fourteen indicators as being at-risk of failing. The cup, the next couple of pages, it gives an overview of how our at-risk students have been performing. The, the only data we had to compare was 2019 to 2021. Remember, we didn't have a 2020, uh, star assessment, so we had to compare to 2019. We can see that there's a learning loss across all population, especially for our, our at-risk students. There has been a, a learning loss, and we know that we have some work ahead of us. We're going to continue to collaborate with all our departments, curriculum department, or special education department, uh, bilingual, into ensuring that we continue to provide support, and that we use some of those state compensatory funds to supplement above and beyond what all students are receiving. There's all the heads.
Thank you, Mrs. Amado. And before we open it up to questions, we know that there's a related item in our budget amendment, we do, are rolling forward some of the funds that were generated by these students. We have to spend the, uh, those funds on the students that generated them. Um, and last year, of course, with students learning from home, that was an exponential challenge. So we have the resources, we have the learning gaps, but we also have the resources to provide the interventions. Questions or comments? Okay, if not, we have one more report to tell you about, and that's a COVID-19 update, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, Dr. Salasad, members of the board. On one, page one-twenty-seven of the board packet, we just have our monthly overview as far as cases, COVID cases. Um, we are basically seeing similar trend to what we are seeing here in the county as far as we seem to have hit a plateau and are now on a downward turn. Um, basically, what we're seeing in the September numbers, August, uh, student cases that we presented to you were at one percent. We're now down in the month of September, uh, just under one, un, under one percent. We had, uh, eight of the fourteen campuses either staying at the exact same percentage, right around that one percent, or they've come down. Uh, same, seeing the same trend in staff. Uh, in August, we were just over one percent as far as cases. Um, and now in August, right at one percent, just under one percent. Um, so we are starting to see a downward trend, so we're hoping that, uh, that will continue, uh, just as we're seeing in the, uh, uh, in the county. And we are post, this is being posted on the website, so monthly, uh, these reports are being posted on the website for the community to be able to, to be able to view.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I think the last report is the board member training requirement report. That's mine, right? Okay. Okay, so annually, at the last regular board meeting, um, at the last regular meeting of the board before an election, um, the president shall announce, and the minutes must reflect the name of each board member who has completed the required hours of training, and who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting. The president shall cause the minutes to reflect the information, and shall make this information available to the local media. For education code eleven-point-one-five-nine, nineteen, TAC, twenty-one-point-one-J. This is policy BBD legal. To this end, I am pleased to, uh, report the following. Ms. Sandra Garcia met the required training hours. Mr. Ruben Trevino has met the required training hours. Mr. Martin Castillo met the required training hours. Ms. Letizia Quintero met the required training hours. Mr. Ray Farías met the required training hours. Mr. Jesus Amaya met the required training hours. And Mr. Leonel Gasta met the required training hours. Do you have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to item number ten, consent agenda. We have eleven items on consent agenda at this time. If any of the board members would like to pool...